It was one right after another, I couldn't get away from it.
Oh, not for you.
I know. Well, then normally, you know, real life, I don't answer phone numbers, so I don't know. You know, kind of, it's usually, no, I'll give you a message. You can't do that when it's this many, it's like, oh.
The bridge, north and south?
Is that for me?
No. And then there's books right here about it also.
Thank you.
That's gonna be up here for people to come and look at for the next four or five weeks. And then we'll have an open meeting about the bridge.
Okay, in about a month?
Yeah.
Or six, month and a half-ish?
Yeah, ready? I just kind of went ahead and made some highlighting things that I thought you might ask me. And then if you have more questions, obviously, I'll try to do whatever, you know what I mean? But just kind of a brief, few little things here and there. So Friday night, we ended up, we had seventy to seventy-five firefighters that showed up Friday night, with as well as ten rescue squad members, four ambulance crews, two sheriff departments, the Dyna PD, and highway patrol. Once we could get into town, we set up incident command at the firehouse and began clearing houses and answering nine-one-one calls. Immediately went into the incident command, Ronnie was there, I think he can vouch for the amount of people. And actually, as far as that goes, I thought I meant as well as it could possibly go.
Doing fast.
Everybody kind of fell in line and did their job and listened, so I thought that went well. The Red Cross initial report, which was before the mark, was that they had nineteen houses destroyed, eighteen houses with major damage, eleven with minor damage. The initial numbers were six households with no insurance, two that were destroyed, three with major damage, one minor, with ten unknowns still before the mark. So I'm still waiting to get the exact final numbers back from them, but I know that from the updated list that she gave me after that, we were at more like twelve to sixteen houses with no insurance. I know that from talking to some people at the mark, that we didn't reach the threshold, whatever threshold for whatever they were talking about money-wise, we didn't have enough uninsured people to meet whatever that threshold was. Which, if we didn't meet it, then I didn't really want to know about it, because can't get it, then I don't need that more information than we can get. But I'm still waiting back to get, and which, starting Monday, I'll start getting with these people, I figured they're gonna need a few days to go through. The Bering Disaster Fund was set up pretty well immediately with the Minister Alliance. So far as of this morning, they've had nine thousand, I think it, approximately nine thousand, he sent me, it was like nine thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars so far to that one fund. The only money they've had, they've built out of that fund yet, is that they paid seventeen hundred dollars to the motel for the displaced people that have been staying there, which pays them up until Saturday. They should have, hopefully, they're, I'll check back with them, but I've been giving them a little bit of space and time to let the people that were over there do their gig, and maybe they'll find them a place to go. I know, I know of options that they've had, but it's up to them to make them options, but I don't know how we go about the urgent, you know what I mean? But we're working on it, they're still, they're taken care of for now. And if they have to stay longer, we'll still be able to pay for them, I mean, it's not that, but. The mark was held Wednesday, we ended up having about twenty to twenty-five groups or organizations there that day. We assisted fifty households or ninety-five individuals. The Salvation Army, they gave me numbers right away, they gave out twelve to fourteen thousand in gift cards that day. Basically, the way they explained to me, everybody walked in with something, unless they, there was several that said, "I don't need it, give it to somebody else." Which is pretty amazing that people would do that, but there was people that said, "I have a job, I have means, just give it to somebody that don't." So with that being said, between SEMA and I, I thought our mark was a huge success. It was only the second one in the last nine to ten years in our region that's ever been set up. So I thought it went well, we had good turnout of people, good turnout of victims or households, you know, so all in all, I thought that went in well. Jeff Alton, so you told me thirty to fifty originally, you thought on the preliminary, well, I kind of told him that, but then told him immediately not to, because less said, hey, that might be higher than that. So he went ahead and put in a hundred and fifty K. He said it's a preliminary, it's not a nothing stick to, but they were trying to get that initial stuff going, so he went ahead and bumped it up to a hundred and fifty K for us and said, "That way, we still have room to go, either way if we have to." So that was turned in, so that he could turn it in with the Clark and Scotland, because Scotland ended up turning it in too. And originally, it was just a Derek Clark that had turned in, but Scotland ended up turning it in too. So all of us have turned in our preliminaries. Convoy of Hope, they delivered eight pallets of totes on Tuesday. As of Thursday, they were almost gone, when I was there yesterday, they were down to like a quarter pallet. So I emailed them, which they had already been in contact with me, to see if we could get some more. So they're working on that, I'm waiting to hear back on getting them some more totes, but I'm working on getting them more totes, because they're using them. Convoy of Hope sent me a partner agreement that they need the county to sign with them, that says that they work, and then they also request W-9 filled out by the county. So I got that for you, and then when they, you get that filled out, I can scan it and send it back to them. I talked to Senator Cindy Olafen in her office several times. She wants to help her, she can. I talked to Nick yesterday from her office, I think he said he was out of Columbia, but he was... We talked, one of his big things that we talked about was the post office, which then, when I got here this morning, I think our representative's office is on that too.
Sound great.
Sound great, yeah.
And also, Josh Hawley's office is working on that as well.
So we have several government entities working hard to try to get their post office back to them, if they have a post office. She also, her office and everything wants, if there's something else that they can help with, to let her know, from your end to my end, and so. It's there, I have some numbers, if you guys don't or need something from individuals, let me know, I'll give them to you. A semi-load, yes, I think it was yesterday, it might have been Wednesday, showed up, semi-load of water, non-perishable foods, and cleaning buckets with supplies in them, were delivered to Jerry Reeves over here. He's gonna set up a distribution, kinda, I think we're looking more towards doing something like they do for the commodities, where they can just have it, this is for Bering, people only, on a separate bay, they can come through and that, or they can just... We're looking at putting it out a little bit, instead of doing it right away, because a lot of the food and stuff, people don't have nowhere to go with it yet, or anything anyway, so we figure, well, we got it, if people need stuff they know or should know, to get a hold of them, I mean, you can get it to them directly. But as far as the last big one, we figured we'd wait till they had a little more of a cleanup, maybe somewhere where they're at. Two containers were purchased by the Bering Voluntary Fire Department and delivered on Tuesday. As of Thursday, yesterday, when I was there, they're full, or are real close to being full. We've had an anonymous donor come up and give forty-two hundred dollars, and they bought two more. So two more are being delivered on Monday. Up there, they've already been paid for, so they'll have four total. And the anonymous donor was right along with what everybody else was saying, so the four containers that are there can be used as long as they want. The fire departments, it don't matter if it's two years, that people need to store their stuff there, until they get their home going, it's gonna stay there, and then when they are completely emptied, they're gonna turn them into a fire training center for the whole county. So it'll be reused to better the community, anyway, so that's good. Volunteers over there have been plentiful and hardworking. With Raymond Junior, I talked to him, and he had, his best estimates, obviously, was a hundred on Saturday, he had sixty-five on Monday, forty on Tuesday, and then Wednesday with the rain and stuff and this going on, they didn't have, he didn't have any, he said, I'm sure there was people doing stuff, but, and then he had another sixty yesterday. And as far as I know, they're planning on staying till they need to, you know, as long as needed. Several benefits sales are being planned. I don't have nothing to do with them, I don't wanna have nothing to do with them. Just so you know, I don't, you know, starting on Monday with the Bering Relief Fund, the Minister Alliance don't want to be in charge of that. They, they don't, it shouldn't be them anyway. If you go through SEMA, we should be setting up a BOAD or a long-term relief committee. They suggest we use people from Red Cross, and it'd be one person for several organizations, along with some local folks from somewhere that would make a board, and then they have to get their 501(c), I mean, they need to be legit, legit, and then Minister Alliance, well, and says they'll give them that money immediately, you know, and turn it, whatever's in that fund to them, and then that committee would be the committee that would then decide how that money is dispersed. I'm gonna start working on it on Monday and get a hold of several people and try to see what we should do. I don't wanna be on that board, I don't want no part of that, neither does the fire department in Bering. They don't want, and it's gonna be a kind of a hard situation, because, so just for instance, the mayor of Bering, well, if we use the city council, they've got their stuff destroyed too, so either they could feel like they don't want to get something, because they're in that position, or people will look at them like they're taking advantage of. So I think that it doesn't need to be them, you know, necessarily, but yet I do think it needs to be somebody from our community, and that knows who people are and the situations, so that the actual, our voices are being heard. I don't think it should just be people that aren't from here, that are on these organizations, that are great, and they know what they're doing, but I think some of us, so, I don't know where that'll go, but we're working on it, and I wanna get them to get it going as fast as I can, so that they can try to help these people distribute this, it's getting it.
It'd be nice to set it up like that, so if someone ever does happen again, this same organization would be used, so if there was a way to get someone from each town,
Yeah.
Each, you know,
Yeah.
Division of the county.
Yeah.
That way, the whole county as a whole could be part of that group,
Yeah.
And then that would help divide it up.
SEMA's gonna be a big help on that, they're, they're good, and they know how to set these up, and they know who to point us, them people, in the right directions to get what they need done immediately as well. And that's why I also thought that Salvation Army or Red Cross, them groups that they have on there, them people know they do this for a living, and they're, you know what I mean? So they, they would know how to go about doing it correctly, I think, you know, so. We're working on that. Truthfully, all these other benefits and stuff, everybody's saying, I don't know how they're gonna do it. In a perfect world, in my mind, all those organizations would turn their money into the disaster fund, and then that would be distributed by the committee. I know that's not how it's gonna be, because I know several of them are talking they're gonna give out their own gift cards, and that's why I said, I don't want no, no part, because somebody's gonna get their feelings hurt at some point, and I just hope that the people that are doing these benefits realize how they need to be transparent and how things could
I can speak to that.
You know what I mean?
I can speak to that, because a lot of people have reached out to me, wanting information, wanting to set things up. The Minister Alliance has come to me, the Chamber of Commerce has come to me, they want to be completely transparent, and so they will be releasing totals of money raised as it's asked for, and we will be able to publish that, so people who are donating can see how much is being collected and where exactly it's at, and then what is, what is happening with it as we progress into the future.
Yes, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna ask me or anything, I do have... I guess I have a question too. I'm getting called from people and said these other benefits, and I want lists of people. I don't feel comfortable giving out anybody's information on anything, I wanna make sure that you guys kind of have my back, or kind of agree, work that I'm, you know, because I, I feel like I'm trying to represent the county, but I don't wanna give out people's information, I don't think that's right, you know what I mean? That's why I think the, going to that fund is the way to go, because that fund has people that have that information, and that that information can be kept confidential, because personally, I don't believe it's anybody's business who had insurance and who didn't have insurance. Or it's at least not my business to tell somebody who did or who didn't, or what their, how much they were affected and how much they weren't affected by this. I don't, I don't wanna be, you know what I mean, I don't,
Yeah.
I don't think that's, I wouldn't want my information just given out to nobody. I know the organizations that took their information, don't just give it out to everybody. I don't wanna be in that, you know what I mean?
So if anybody's wanting to help someone, we have those people in those places that they can go to get into touch, and those places can help distribute handouts and stuff.
Yeah.
So I don't feel like we're in the spot to be telling someone what individuals to go to.
Okay.
They need to go to as a whole, go to those contacts for those things, depending on what they're wanting to do, who they need to get a hold of, and that's who they need to reach out to, and then those people can help them get in touch where they need to be.
So we're in agreement, and that's okay. The other, I have the information and paperwork on Missouri Disaster Assistant Grants stuff from SEMA. From what I've read and what I'm gathering, we don't necessarily qualify for a lot of the stuff that they have, or that's in that particular one. But what I also understand is if the right people in the right places say and do the right things, and that it could possibility come through, I don't know. I have stuff, I'm looking at it and working with whoever I can, trying to get whatever we can. I might have to ask some questions answered here or there, so I'll give it to you guys when I, that could give. Stuff that I'm looking towards Monday, because I'm figuring that I'm really trying to, myself, transition into long-term relief stage now. Not as much, you know, the immediate, let's, the people are waiting on insurance, and you know, they got their own things, I'm trying to just set up for the future. They wanna build back better than what they were. So, I mean, I'm trying to help everywhere I can, and try to be wherever I can, but I also have a job, and I have to kind of start getting somewhat back to, you know, normalcy a little bit for myself, you know, I'll still be there to do whatever needs to be done, and work with whoever, and I can still be gone if I need to, but, you know, I'm trying to convert myself into the long term.
You said the one we didn't meet the qualifications for was SEMA or FEMA?
From what I understand, the FEMA, I think the, and I, no, don't quote me a hundred percent, but from what I understand, the FEMA, I think our county as a whole, they're gonna end up, we were close to reaching that with the other counties, to get county assistance. Individual aid, from what I've understood, we did not, or not, probably not gonna reach that criteria. That would be something, yeah, but with SEMA, they have, they have some grants, so that, you know, it's kind of a, so they have stuff, they have stuff, but I don't, from what they've told me, we don't look like we're gonna meet that criteria for individual FEMA assistance. Again, Jeff City would make that decision, and be more to make them kind of things, you know, on that bigger level. I'm just, I know that we have, like, the, there's a disaster mitigation plan committee that does that every five years, and makes one for our whole region, our little area. He's out of Scotland County, that's part of it or somewhere, but. Things that people start asking, things like weather sirens and storm shelters, those are in, already in our mitigation. So when they have the funds that go out for them once a year, we look, now that it's over, it kind of helps us that those are already in that plan. He knows about that, we want all that stuff. So when those come open again, we're already kind of in line to be filling out for that stuff down the line. So it's a terrible thing, but any monies that we can get from anywhere, we're gonna try to get, whether I can do it from my vantage point, or the fire department at their end, they're at the same boat, they're looking at anything, and then the city needs to be on that same page as well as the county. You know what I mean, everybody kind of just keeping your eyes and ears open, and I, I know what the, that, nothing else, that mark, I met a lot of people, you know, that were a lot of different things that I wouldn't have known, and now they know me as well, and so they know what our situation is here in our county, and so they all were like, any opportunities, we're gonna automatically, you know, as soon as it comes out, we'll let you guys know. So then, any of those, I'm gonna take, try to fill out for every single thing that we can try to get, why not?
Was Jeff the one that told you, who's telling you we didn't meet?
Uh, yeah, it was Jeff and Joey were saying they didn't think in the, that we were gonna reach the individual level. I'm sure a lot of that still has to do with all the final numbers that all those things are putting together, and that SEMA put together, because the, you know, they had
And that's how the county individually, they're still the other one that
Yeah, the county one, that sounded like, they were like eighty-five percent,
Yeah.
that was gonna happen for the county, you know, for you guys to get all that flooding damage,
Yeah.
and that sort of thing that goes with that, that, I think it sounded like, but it's gonna be, go through. Because they were gonna, it's all numbers, is what I'm learning, it's all about money numbers, how much, how many, and that sort of thing, so. But we have, the population isn't that high, so our numbers, even with the big scale, we still just, we don't, you know... But again, they kept saying that they work for Jeff City. So, you know, Jeff City ends up having the final say on all this, a lot of this stuff, especially through SEMA. If they say do something, they do it. So we'll see where that goes and how, you know, I know we do have some friends that are looking out, are trying to look out for us there, sounds like, you know.
Senior Olafen's office has been working non-stop, and is hopefully making waves in things like the post office issue and senior housing, put the full power of her office behind Bering Senior Housing, and trying to get those people situated, and investigating ways to work, you know, get whatever assistance to them as possible.
Yeah.
Also, just on the informational standpoint, while we're talking about the post office, I'm in the process of building a list, I've reached out to our US legislators, Senator Hawley's office, Senator Schmidt's office, and Congressman Graves' office. They have been very responsive, they're in the process, a few, a couple of them, of getting us a comprehensive list of where people can call, write, email. On the post office issue, that's one of the fronts that I'm working on right now, from the informational component. I'm aiming to have all of that in, you know, ready, you know, online and in the paper in our next edition, so, and I will juice that out to all of the news, local news entities that have been on the ground as well.
How are you? I, I think you're doing great, I think all the work that you've put in, you know, trying to get stuff, put together, stuff ready, I think, I think you're handling it well, I think everything's going... For what happened, everything's going smooth, trying to get things put into place and stuff, so. And that night, I said, when I was there watching, watching you and Merlin, Lauren, you know, you guys were keeping on the same page, everybody was running smooth. All the, all the volunteers that came that night, everybody was there, no one, no one's like, well, I don't really wanna do that, or, you know, everybody was, whatever we have to do, we're gonna go do. And I, I think it went well, the search parties having it organized, having the list out, so we knew exactly who was where, make sure everybody was in radio contact. I think you guys kind of went through the list, and if it was, if it was a training drill, I think you guys, you know, checked the boxes, make sure everybody was being safe, so. I appreciate that, you know, because like I said, you had that many people there that are all volunteers, a lot of those guys have never seen each other before.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, you guys stayed in charge and kept everybody focused, so.
I think you
I think you guys done great, so.
I go back to the stuff we done, where we started, and we told you we had, who's gonna hang you out there in front, who's gonna run through you and back you. And that's one of the things that I've seen through this whole deal, is it seems like you stepped up, and people, from the trainings that you had this year and stuff, people realized to run it through you, and you, I think you've done excellent.
Thank you.
And I think the, the rest of the community has accepted to run a lot of this through you. And so, thanks.
Thank you guys, and hopefully.
As far as any of this, as far as any of this stuff that comes through you, keep sharing this information, because I'm looking, I mean, what are we gonna do to rebuild, where's the money gonna come from? How are we gonna, whether we can get displaced workers from, you know, some of this, going after it just like you are in every direction that we can think of? So any information that you can get a hold of, let's still keep reading that in the wheel every day.
Yeah.
You got information, and then when we have information, we'll reach out to you and make sure we're all on the same page.
I, that's perfect.
And then it's gonna come to a point where, as emergency management director, like you said, you've gotta phase out this and let others just gonna have to pick this up, take it on too.
Right.
So, uh, just keep up the good work and, and let's all keep working together, let's all keep this. Cause there's a lot of progress.
Yeah, it's amazing the cleanups they've done so far is, it's amazing how fast them guys worked and. How many, that Saturday, it was unbelievable, the amount of people, the amount of skid loaders and. Equipment that came from anywhere and everywhere.
I don't think you can get another vehicle like that.
Yeah, it was, that was one of the biggest things I heard since then, was that was the complaint, was it's. It's, uh, hard to complain, but it was almost so many people that they, it's amazing, nobody got hurt, I mean, it really is, but. Uh, it, it's just, they've, and Bering community in general's been great to work with. I mean, from their fire department is spectacular and they deserve a lot of credit and. Still, and their families and Weaverland disaster area, however, whatever their name is, you know, I'm messing up, but. Everybody's been good, I don't think I've had one. I, I, I've had a few, but I haven't had too many issues with anything, you know, or, or even. Arguments or anything, you know, and so it's, it's been pretty good on that end.
Part of that, let that roll off, that's emotion. People, people stressed out, messed up, you understand, I mean, it just happens. And so you gotta, I think you've done good at letting that roll off, it seems like you have.
Tried to.
And, uh, you know, it's one of those things where if you're not prepared, you're prepared to fail. And while we were over there cleaning up and everything, there was a lady that had an incident that needed to be kinda checked out. He had his first responder bag in his truck, he went over, got her checked out, made sure she was okay, got her blood pressure and stuff. She sat with her for a while and got her calmed down and stuff, so I mean. As he's over there, I mean, he's still, you know, he's got everybody's best interest in his eyes and make sure everybody's being safe and taken care of, so. It, uh, it really shows, so.
That list that you have, I'd like if you could copy that or email that to me.
Yeah, I can email it to you.
Notes you read off to us.
Yeah, I can do that.
I think that's, I think that's all for the day.
And then can you guys just talk about where you're at with the Bering, you know, disaster response? What is the county doing on your end to, to support?
We're working to get the, we had more road damages than we first thought, so our road crews has been busy trying to get roads where they're passing. And then as far as what's going on in Bering, it, it, it seems like. One of the things I've been thinking about, government can really mess things up sometimes, and what's going on over there? Is being handled, and so we've been talking to you, we've been talking to all of them, been talking to. How do we do, what do we do, right now, we're, I'm trying to get long term, I'm looking for money. Looking for housing money, I'm looking for money for the businesses that wanna rebuild, how do we get them financing and where they can stay there? Can't lose, you can't lose them families out of Bering, you can't lose those businesses out of Bering. And so as, as far as the county, we're, as soon as they get the roads and get some of that. We're over there trying to help repair the roads in Bering, I think it's too early right now with everything that's going on over there, and so, uh. We're prepared to start helping with that when we can.
And has the county done anything as far as any equipment, any manpower, any funds from the county coffers? Over to the Bering tornado response?
We've been over there every day, you know, we have transferred money out, um. We've been trying to figure out how to do that, the way the government's set up, for us to start writing checks to the city of Bering or the fire department, so. So, trying to support it, trying to help push it along, and then we're here for long haul. As far as transferring money, like I said, we've looked at it, we've called the attorney. There's, our hands are tied to a lot of stuff, what we can and cannot do. When it comes time to rock the roads and some of that, that's stuff we can do, and so, uh. I don't know exactly, you know, what you're looking for.
The only thing that's really like at the top of my mind is we had a situation with shipping containers, where we needed shipping containers immediately. We needed to get these people's personal belongings secured. It was a financial challenge, is what it was my understanding, the county was asked to step in and purchase these shipping containers. And that did not happen, and those containers were, ended up being funded by other sources.
Just so you know, on the shipping containers, I drove to Bering, Kim and I were gonna put the money in the shipping containers. I drove over there, offered to pay for those containers up front, use them as long as you want to, do whatever you want with them. Kim and I were gonna pay that out of our pocket. Because we had some red flags of what we could and couldn't do with the county money. When I got there, I explained to the fire department how this was gonna work, the fire department decided to purchase them. It was my understanding, by the time we were having this conversation, that KJ had already purchased the containers, it was all dead and water. But we did, we did look at that, we did try to find ways to do that, and so what. We offered to do was just buy the containers, let them use, because I, I could do that, that was my money, I could do what I wanted. With the county money, there's stuff we can and cannot do, and so that was one of the things the attorney told us that we could not do.
And that's one of those things, like, at the meeting the other day, there at Bering, uh, getting that permission to, uh. Release liability for the county, from the county for the city and stuff, that's what's gonna free us up to be able to go in there with our. With our guys and our equipment to fix the streets, to let the gravel and stuff. Um, we had to have that release of liability before we can do anything, uh, as far as the. Helping the fire department and stuff like that, as far as, uh, that goes with, with county money. We, we can only do intergovernmental, so we can help the city, but we can't help the volunteer group. Uh, so if the, if the city is doing something that they need help with. As far as this disaster goes, that's where we're able to kinda step in and help them, if they, if the city comes to us with, with something. Then we can try to figure out a way to better help them, but we can't help the volunteer group.
Okay, so I just wanna just put this in your orbit. Uh, the city of Edina had every available piece of equipment and manpower. In Bering from Saturday morning on, and so if you could just keep in your. On the list in the back of your mind, they've been in Bering since, and they're gonna have a budgetary issue come the end of this year, I'm sure. So, if, you know, if you're intergovernmental and you can dedicate funding. To help support things like the city of Bering and the city of Edina, um, please. Keep that in mind, is that something, you know, that might be something you can dedicate county funds to, uh, in the future. You know, and the reason I'm asking you guys is because people are asking me, you know, so. Um, people wanna know, you know, what's been done in Bering on the county end of it. We're seeing, you know, the Knox County Arlen School District responded with equipment and manpower. The Knox County Nursing Home responded with equipment and manpower. The, Edina, the city of Edina responded with equipment and manpower, but Knox County. Did not respond with any of that and people.
And that's where, if you go back to earlier in our conversation today. When we talked about Saturday, when we talked about all those people there, you couldn't fit anything else in that town, there was, people turned out. So if we sent more over there, it would've just been more of a cluster, we're not saying we're not doing anything. Cause we are gonna go, we are gonna go over there and help, but the thing is, is. They have that covered, that end of the cleanup and everything, so what we're looking at is after that cleanup and stuff's done. We're gonna go in there with our equipment, our manpower, we're gonna buy the rock, we're gonna, we're gonna go back in there and we're gonna fix those roads up. So they still have roads, you can see they're all pumping, they're getting better, it's. It's gonna be a lot of work to maintain that, and that's where, once those people pull out, that's when we're gonna go in and start trying to help clean up. The roads and get things, you know, usable again.
What about the highway, you know, the highway through town, which is the main drive? Is it something you guys are gonna be able to work on the highway, can you guys, you know, help work with MoDOT to maybe? Um, speed that up a bit to, you know what I mean, once it's time to start doing, working on roads in Bering, is that something?
And the blacktop will have to be through MoDOT, uh, but that's where, you know. As the county measures, we can, we can help try to, you know, put leverage on them to get there, speed up, but. At the same time, it's gonna have to go through those MoDOT steps, uh, to be done.
It has to go through MoDOT. Though we don't have an asphalt plane. I'd like to, but. And all the work that's been done so far has really, really been appreciated by everybody in the community and the county.
And, and going back to, you know, the county helping Bering as a whole, you know, right now, why they have that help, that gives us time to get our roads. You know, fixed, you know, we had, we had tubes that were washed out, we had ten foot section of road that was completely missing in one part. Another one where the road was washed out all the way around the tube, just different things like that, so our guys are out, you know, trying to get all these roads. In the county that are passable and stuff, while they're doing this cleanup, and then once they're done with that, we should be about done with our cleanup on our roads. To allow us to move right in to help fix their roads, so it really gives us kinda time to fix. The county issues that we have with all the rain, with all the flooding, but different washouts and stuff, and then. We'll be able to move in there and help, so we are going to help, it's just not, you know, like we're just, you know, sitting back watching everybody else do stuff, so.
Looking for the best way to take your resources.
I mean, we could throw, we throw manpower and guys over there and equipment, but. Right now, you're at that point where there's some equipment just sitting there because there's too much equipment there right now, so.
I mean, have you been in the last, were you there yesterday? I mean, it's nineteen different, you know, there's a lot, a lot of those damaged buildings, all this left as a slab. You know, there's still a lot up that need to come down, but I mean, I'm. By the amount of work and it's interesting because I was, uh. On the phone interviewing with the upper echelon of Ameren and Ameren Missouri, we had a conference call yesterday. Where, um, the regional director for here got on with me and just really laid it down and. Uh, what happened here was significant. From there end of it, and that really tells me, because this is their business, storm response. And they had people on the ground one hour after the tornado assessing the damage. And then when they rolled in with that seventy-five of everything, you know, uh. And the takeaway that the. Kind of the top of their triangle that was on the ground here was how amazing it is. The response of Bering Missouri, you know, and specifically made it a point to really nail down. Uh, this is a little town and for the amount of support that showed up and how impressed he and his team was. With what they saw in Bering and what a good experience it was for all of their responders. Uh, because of that, um, I just can't drill down, uh, enough and. Um, and I was very appreciative to hear the upper echelon of the Ameren people sending the message. You know, Bering Missouri, we're with you, so, um, and their response to, absolutely, just like everyone else, so. I'm, I'm very proud.
It's always like when we first got there Friday night, it was, it felt like it was an eternity. To get to do anything, you know, everybody, all the departments, you know, they all have chainsaws, people were showing up left and right with chainsaws. Wanting to clear roads, and I can't send nobody out to cut a tree up a road when I don't have confirmation that the power is not on. When there's power lines between every tree, so it was very challenging to stand there and wait. And not be able to put people to work that wanted to do stuff, you know, to, to try to think safely and. You know, cause it, and I was, we were pretty certain that there wasn't a lot of power going through at that time, cause there was so much damage and I was pretty sure it was. You know, but without confirmation and that, that was hard, but it felt like it took a long time, but I really don't think it was. Like she said, within an hour probably, they were there, somebody, but it felt like an eternity when it was sick at the time, you know? Which people always have told me that on, you know, waiting ambulance calls and stuff and then, took you so long and, no, actually, we were there in. Eight minutes or something, well, it felt like a lot longer and I think that, that happened, that was part of the deal there that night, but. All in all, it went well, I appreciate you guys helping out where you had been, helping out and being around, I do appreciate that.
You guys have any questions for us? Okay, we've got a lot to do, so I'm gonna shut this down and go back to work, do you wanna add anything while we're live to the people who are watching or? Okay, okay, well. Call us if you need us.
Thank you guys. Yeah, I hear these, I don't know who has to do what, I don't know, that's not.
Definitely, I'll need to fill this out, and then we'll need to look through this and then we'll make a motion and stuff, so.
Okay, and then just like I said, let me know where you can go off, I'm down here.
Really, you're getting a lot of accolades on the internet right now, you're, you're a hero. Can you, before I let you go, can you just tell everybody how much you make to be the Knox County Emergency Management Director?
Uh, originally it was a hundred dollars a month, I recently, they seem fit to give me a raise to two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.